...in the Webster Herald, and before we get started, for the rise of the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on my God, indivisible, with all its justice and.
Now, the applicant for 589 Adams Road Defense has asked to table until September 8th. She's still considering the options after getting the board's feedback. So I'll make a motion to table September 8th for the applicant.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, the next tabled item is 1153 Bay Road Fence. Mr., how could you identify yourself please for the record and just tell us about? And then what we'll do is we'll have Corinne read that into the record item.
Can you read that? 1153 Bay Road Fence, located at 1153 Bay Road. Applicant Jennifer Vega is requesting area variances to allow three-foot side setbacks where 10 feet is required, associated with the installation of a six-foot tall shadow box fence on a .6 acre parcel having SPL number 093.06-1-10, located in an MHR medium-high residential district under Section 225-77(c) of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Okay, I was out of order. Now, could you identify yourself and tell us about your practice?
My name is David Vega, homeowner as well. You want me to elaborate on what I went?
Yeah, tell us about, I guess we're looking for why you can't comply with zoning and I'd love to hear about the shadow box fences.
Uh, no, yeah, so basically, I'd like to install a six-foot shadow box. It's basically a six-foot stockade fence which basically has another stockade on the backside of it. It creates a shadow box, so it's not fully encapsulated, but it gives you still visibility through somewhat. So, I'd like to go about three feet off the fence line. My neighbor to the north is Bay Smiles, Dr. Fantuso and his practice there. His daily practice is to the north. To the south line that'll be affected is a private drive Avalon Trail. They're all the way down about a quarter mile down there on the bay. The nearest house behind me is approximately about 150 yards behind me, behind Dr. Fantuso's or Bay Smiles. I want to get the full use of my property and being that the north and south property lines really won't be affected by neighboring houses. More privacy in the yard, just due to high traffic area. The business next door, I work from home 80% of the time, business next door, constant traffic coming in at night during emergencies, outside having get-togethers, you know, and then there's emergencies, there's traffic that comes in. And I think it kind of bodes well for them as well as far as having privacy when their patients are looking out the window and see me and my family outside, running around with a dog and whatnot. Plus, we got a new dog, so I'd like to have that fenced in for the safety of the dog. I don't think it's going to impose or anyone's going to object to it regards to my neighbors. I know most of them. And again, it's only going to affect the north and south side of my property. The backside, I'm going to be putting about 20 feet realistically off of my property line itself. So, that won't be affecting anyone's easements or anything.
Now, does it have to be six feet tall? I mean, just for.
I mean, I have a research doing, the only one that comes stock is a six-foot tall shadow box or a six-foot stockade type fence. I would prefer it to be taller on the north and south, but unfortunately, just because of the traffic flow and the business on the one side. Again, the south side of the lot's really only going to affect, it's going to start at about five feet from the lot, but then because of trees that are in the way, it's going to kind of encroach in onto the three-foot mark. That's why it's kind of at an angle. And the way the lot lines are, it's kind of weird. They're at a parallel to, a sharp parallel, the lot lines, so. So, I mean, I would, to save me the extra cost on my end, I'm sure I could order a shorter fence, but it's come stock from Lowe's or Home Depot or B&amp;L, it's a six-foot, as far as I've seen. I'm not a fully professional about it, but yeah.
Okay, I guess.
How tall is the fence that runs parallel to Bay Road?
I'm sorry?
How tall is the fence that runs parallel to Bay Road?
That would be six foot as well, but that setback from center line is probably about 100 feet from center line, I think, isn't it? I'm pretty sure. And you can't really see it due to the trees, really. It's pretty, that fence that comes off of the porch area, the north side, is going to be approximately two sections, so it's going to be about 16 to 18 feet long by six foot high. And I think that is from center line of Bay Road is about 70, about 70 feet off Bay Road. But again, there's a big tree in the center that blocks that as well, so. I think aesthetically, it's not going to look bad at all, but.
Did you say it's a doctor's office to the?
Yeah, Bay View Smiles, I believe it's called. It used to be Dr. Fantuso's office on Bay. And actually, my driveway, across my driveway is Town of Penfield, right at the Penfield line.
Personally, I have more of an issue with the one on the north side than the south side because the garage is only 4.38 feet off the.
I'm sorry?
I said, I have more of an issue with the one on the north side than south because the garage is only 4.38 feet off the lot lines, so. And it's a fairly short piece of fence there. The rear lot line, you're sticking with the 10 feet, so there's no variance there.
The side lot is, it is literally a gravel private drive. You're saying on the garage side?
Yeah, it's a short piece there, it looks like.
Yeah, that's the south side.
20 to 30 feet, yeah, short piece, yeah.
That approximately is, I mean, realistically, that doesn't really give it any depth, that's probably. That's probably 100, well, probably about a solid 100-foot.
If you've watched, if you've watched some of the ZBA meetings in the past, fence variances are pretty common, are pretty sought after. And typically, a 10-foot fence, or excuse me, a six-foot fence, it has to be 10 feet off the line. And typically, we're looking for some sort of compromise if the board feels that the six-foot fence is warranted, maybe further off the line. Is there any reason you can't come any further off the line than three feet?
I'm trying to come, I'm trying to keep it aesthetically pleasant. I'm trying to come off the corner of the garage, basically. There's a full tree line, if anyone's ever been there, there's a full tree line that lines that entire road, which part of it's mine. So, there is a big oak tree that's at the very end that causes a little issue, and there's all pines that run that entire line of that. So, it kind of centers itself, so it'll. It's right on the side, so I'm bringing it into the corner of the garage, which again, at the very end, the corner of the garage, it's approximately probably about five to eight feet off the actual property line. But when we get up more towards the end of the property, it kind of, kind of, the way the trees are, it kind of tethers, tethers down to about maybe three, maybe four feet.
Is there a parking lot, I didn't know, is there a parking lot, the dentist office up against the.
Huge, yes. And it's actually, it's actually an entryway to the back, to the back residence, I'm not sure.
I thought there was, but I couldn't say for.
Pretty large parking lot. And actually, that side is, that side when I get to the back parking lot is actually going to be about six feet from the, from the actual. But I wanted to keep it at like three, but someone's going to be five, someone's going to be seven. I'm going to try to keep it as far away as possible, but I just want to try to gain as much yard space in my yard as possible, too.
I think this is somewhat unique in that there's a road on one side, it's a private, private road, but it's a road nonetheless, and there's a commercial use on the north. So, I, you know, I could see that applicants desire to, you know, have some privacy from that commercial location and from the road. The question is, is three feet reasonable, or should we ask them to go like five feet? Every, every one of these applications has a little bit of a different flavor to it, you know?
Yeah, based on the tree, oh, go ahead, Don.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Based on the tree line on both the north and the south side of the property. I did not think to bring a tape measure, but I don't know that it would be exactly at three. I think it'll be three in points and then probably, excuse me, up to five based on getting a straight line to miss the trees. When I visited the property and having lived over there for a while, I'm pretty familiar with the area. You can see right into the doctor's examination rooms from the backyard, plus the vehicles are visible through the tree line. So, the need for a fence is definitely there. There are actually vehicles that were going in and out of Avalon Trail when I visited the property, which is not uncommon either, so it's. And it's a weird, it's a weird shaped lot.
It is. And I'm actually redoing my deck to lower it, to be honest with you, it needs to be done anyway, but to lower it because even with the six-foot fence on my deck, I'm still going to be able to see. I mean, I just watch procedures from my deck. So, it's kind of interesting, now, so, but I'm actually redoing my deck too.
A couple more sessions, you'll be certain.
I mean, the way I ask, I mean, so.
And it is heavily wood on that side.
It is, yeah.
Concern I have is the fences in the front setback, and it's solid, which is not permitted in a front setback. It's not advertised for that either.
It is not solid. A shadow box is not a solid fence, that's why I'm going with a shadow box. A shadow box is a, is a, is a fence that is offset, staggered, with a gap in between it. So, it's not a, I don't, a stockade fence is considered a solid.
So, it's why I can pick a fence?
Or like board on board?
It's like, here's a board, and here's a board, and there's a board in the center, so there's still.
They're staggered.
There's a staggered board on each side, so there's no bad side. So, but you can still see light through it.
But looking, looking straight at it, you have a solid.
You don't see a solid straight, you see a staggered solid.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess you definition solid, so.
You know, it's in the front setback even though it's behind the front line of the house? Or just based on where the front setback is on Bay Road?
That's clearly, the house is clearly closer to the street line than we would typically.
And actually, the porch is setback farther than the house by, I think, three feet. That's where the fence is going to start from, is the porch.
I understand your concern, Don. It's almost as if the house needs a variance and then, you know, because it's pre-existing and.
I just, you know, for regard, grand variance, I just want to make sure we tidy everything up.
Yep.
That's me, I'm sorry.
The map doesn't show this, but I think the doctor's office is about that close to the road also.
Probably closer.
Actually, I think it is, he's right.
So, my point being, it doesn't interfere with any.
No, no, I just.
I understand what you're saying.
Well, the notice says. It's ambiguous. Yeah, I'm just. When I looked at it quick, I thought it said three side setbacks, it's three-foot side setbacks. But.
But I'll tell you what, this meeting's open to the public, and since we're not allowed in public meetings, you can call us at 872-7011 if you have any comments about this application for or against. And while we're waiting for the phone to ring, if anybody's interested in speaking, I'll make a motion pursuant to Section 617.5 Environmental Code, make a motion for type two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I doubt anyone's going to call because it's commercial on the right, private drive on the left, so there's no real immediate, you know, residential immediate neighbors to it. I guess, from what I'm hearing, there's a couple concerns, but they're not, not, not that serious of a concern. Corinne is saying that the fence will, you think you can get a straight line on that fence? Corinne says there's a lot of trees there, you're going to be three feet.
I think she's correct in what her statement in regards to is, it's going to be roughly in the range of three to five,
especially on the south side, which seems to be most of the concern. So, I mean, I will, I can, I can, I can try to get it more on the edge of the five, you know? And again, it's all hell, I mean, I didn't, you know, exactly measure it all, and it might get up to four, it might be four and a half, but I'm going to try, I would like to try to come straight off of that garage, just to kind of have it. Again, my purpose of this is to try to get the, the full use of my yard without losing any of it due to the fence. Because, just because of how my yard is set up, commercial and private drive, you know, that's really my goal, so.
About the other thoughts that?
I'm listening and everything.
Pretty much what we're discussing. Again, my view is, since there's a commercial use to the right, I think that's, the privacy in that direction's important from the cars, the headlights. The applicant says that he could literally look into the windows of the doctor's office while he's sitting on his deck. And the piece of fence off the corner of the garage is minimal, it's between 25 and 30 feet, and it's really not much closer to the line than the garage itself, which is a major structure. I don't think anyone's going to call, and so I'll close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the board. I'll go through the, anybody have anything, any other comments?
Yeah, it looks like the fence would be 20 by scale, 27 feet from the front property line.
27. Do you think, you think we need another variance for that?
Well, it's in a front setback. There again, it'll clear his tile, I mean.
Yeah, technically, we need another, well, we've got another application coming up where the guy's built a deck on the back of his house, and it's in the front setback.
I understand.
Because the house is so close, so close to the road. So, what Mr. Houser's saying is technically, if you read the code by every letter of the word, exactly what it says, you're not allowed a fence in the front setback, even though your house is that close to the road. From the perspective, the perspective to your house, it's not in the front setback, but by the code it is. So, technically, we should, we should advertise for a variance for having the fence in the front setback also.
Well, we can make a determination this evening to permit that.
Permit it? But, well.
If the location's shown on.
If the location's shown on the map, which scales out to be, what did I say, 27 feet?
All right, well, I.
I hate to have the applicant come back for another meeting.
Be good to clean that up, this way it doesn't have a problem in the future. I agree with that.
Unless counsel has objections. No, I, the notice says setbacks plural. Okay. Very good.
I guess, why don't we, why don't we reference the map and make that part of the record? All right, it is anyways, but why don't we make that specific? So that, you know, if somebody looks at this in the future, they know that we saw that that fence is in that, in that location.
I don't have a date. We provide ultimately written approvals, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's just make sure that it's in the written approval.
Yeah, yeah, that's the way to go, okay.
And we can define it based on the northwest corner of the.
Porch.
Porch, running north to a point so far from the setback, whether we have agreed to three or a five. I think, I think we can.
Describe it maybe behind the front setback of the existing non-conforming house? Something like that? That's a way, a way to cover it, and, you know, and then nobody would mistake that we missed that, okay. I'll go through the standards. Okay. What I want to start by saying is this house is a little bit unique in that he's sandwiched between a commercial, a commercial business, a doctor's office, and a private drive. So, he'd like to gain privacy from the commercial business and from the cars. It's a, that's a stone road, isn't it, Avalon? Raising the dust and making, I don't, gravel roads, making noise when cars go up and down the roads. So, he's, he's trying to gain a little bit of privacy and keep the dust down and keep the noise down. He is, he is going to comply with the rear setback, which is 10 feet, so he's just looking for the side setback variances, okay? I don't think, I don't think there's any detriment created to nearby properties. Matter of fact, the doctor, doctor's office might even like the fact that there's a fence there, so they have privacy as well. It's really not achievable by any other method because the six-foot fence is required, as he said, as he sits on his deck, he could look right over a shorter fence and look into the doctor's office. It's somewhat substantial in that this board has traditionally been opposed to six-foot fences. But we have, we have given variances when they're three, four, or five feet off the line, when the situation, you know, makes that appropriate to do so. Difficulty's not really self-created. As I said, it's a lot of sandwiched between the private, private drive and the doctor's office. Not an undesirable change, it'll be an attractive fence. He will be able to maintain it from both sides, there's room. And there's no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. We've had no negative comments from the public. So, with that, anybody have anything to add?
You indicated side setbacks, I could, for note, to include the front setback also.
We'll make that part of the motion, okay. Yeah, okay. So, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance to allow three-foot side setbacks where 10 feet is required, associated with the installation of a six-foot tall shadow box fence on a .6 acre parcel having SPL number 093.06-1-10, located in an MHR medium-high density residential district. Section 225, under Section 225-77(c) of the Code of Town of Webster. And I'd also like to make his map a part, part of the record in that, that six-foot fence is no closer to the road than the front setback of the house, which is, which is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. All right. Could you, could you improve on that wording, or is that good enough?
So, that's, that's the, not including the front porch, that's at 24 feet and change?
That's correct.
Yes.
So, what we'll do though is Catherine will make this, this map as part of the record so that this could be referenced. So, basically, you have to build pretty much what you showed us, right?
Of course.
It's pretty simple.
Second.
Mr. Barone.
Aye.
Mrs. Vola.
Aye.
Mr. Houser.
Aye.
Mr. Denoto.
Aye.
Okay, now, you have your variance. The variance is good, mini full construction has to start within one year, and you need a builder's permit. So, you could actually go for that, that's all if you want to. Very good, very good. Congratulations, good luck with your project. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it. Have a good night.
Do you want me to read this one again?
Yeah, you know what we'll do, even though this, this next application was tabled, the dimensions changed, so we should read it into the record again? Okay.
Beechwood.
Beechwood, yeah, yeah. There was a long front setback left.
I'll get started. 292 Beechwood Crescent, porch addition. Located at 292 Beechwood Crescent, applicant David Walderek is requesting an area variance to allow a 38-foot front setback where 50 feet is required, associated with a porch and kitchen addition on a .44 acre parcel, giving SPL number 078.06-2-14.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is David Walderek.
You're back, you're back, you're back to, actually, we heard your whole application last time, we just had the wrong setback advertised, so. Why don't you just recap the project for us?
Yeah, so the original setback that we requested was in error because the house is actually in, it's an existing non-conforming house. And so, with that additional footage that we needed to actually have more of a setback, we needed more relief. So, we're asking for 12-foot of relief now, where 50 feet is necessary or required. That allows for a seven-foot porch that we were looking at.
Now, we did, we did talk about this at some length last meeting. And I guess we had maybe 40 feet instead of 38-foot front setback, I believe. So, we were doing, we were doing the math, and we said, hey, we're two feet off here, so nothing's really changed. Anybody have any other comments besides what we discussed last meeting? Okay, it was just a formality we had to go through to make this right, all right? Right.
You called to open that up to the public last time I had.
Yeah, I'm sure we opened it up to the public and closed that portion of the public meeting, so we'll bring it back to the board. And pursuant to 617.5 of the Environmental Code, I'll make a motion for a type two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Somebody want to go through the standards?
The request is not out of character with the neighborhood. There are several homes within that neighborhood, and specifically on Beechwood Crescent, that have got front porch additions. Most of the houses were built just with a front stoof and porches for covering the entryway and for setting it's just a more attractive feature to the house. And it makes sense. There's no detriment created to nearby properties. The house is actually located on the curve, so because of the curve, it's got a little more room to come out forward and still appear like it's in line with the house to the left and to the right of it. The benefit is not achievable by any other method. The front porch has to be at the front, there's no other location for it. Likewise, the kitchen addition, which is not really part of the dimensional variance, it has to come off of the kitchen. So, again, both are on the front of the house. The request is not substantial. The house itself will actually be in line or slightly further from the road than the neighbor to the right of it, to the, to the east. It looks like the setbacks were different on those two streets as far as when they were built. The difficulty is not self-created, I would say in this case that's true, because the placement of the house is where it is, and those features can only be on the front of the house. Certainly not an undesirable change, it'll be a very attractive change to the front of the house, it'll give the house some character. Any other comments?
And the record reflects that all four members were here for that meeting where the other information was set forth and we're adapting to the record of that proceeding, as if it were all set forth tonight.
Should we include that? Well, you just did.
I just did.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make a motion, or if not, I will? I will make a motion to grant an area variance at 292 Beechwood Crescent for the applicant David Walderek to allow a 38-foot front setback where 50 feet is required, associated with a porch and kitchen addition on a .44 acre parcel having SPL number 078-06-2-14, in conjunction with the map that was provided to the zoning board with the revision date of 8/14 of 2020.
Second.
Mrs. Vola.
Aye.
Mr. Barone.
Aye.
Mr. Denoto.
Aye.
Mr. Houser.
Aye.
All right, folks have your variance. Two conditions as always.
Thank you.
One, you're meeting full construction, and you need a building permit. And congratulations, good luck with your project. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to the first scheduled matter.
All right.
Eighteen-fourteen Ridge Road.
Eighteen-fourteen Ridge Road deck staircase. Located at eighteen-fourteen Ridge Road, applicant Dean Harrisus is requesting an area variance to allow a forty-two-foot front setback where seventy-five feet is required to construct a fourteen-by-sixteen-foot backyard deck associated with a pre-existing nonconforming single-family residence on a point-five acre parcel having SBL number zero-six-six-point-zero-three-zero dash zero-one-dash-zero-sixty-nine, located in an LC-two low-intensity commercial district under section two-two-five-dash-sixteen-B-sub-five-sub-A of the code of the Town of Webster.
All right. Could you state your name, please, and tell us about your project?
It's Michael Collins, and I'm a friend of Dean Harrisus. I'm also contractor. And, um, we're trying to build a deck on the back of this house.
Now, when I looked at it, it's, it's, it's actually, it's interesting. This happens occasionally where the deck is in the front setback.
Yeah.
And even that, even though it's behind the house. And, and this happens with a lot of the older homes. I mean, that, that house has to be a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty.
Yeah, it's very old.
It's got an old stone foundation, I noticed.
Yes.
And when that was built, Ridge Road was probably a dirt or gravel road.
Exactly.
Uh, so, in those days, there was no zoning codes, so they'd build a house closer to the road than we would allow today, obviously. So, it's kind of interesting that the rear, yeah, the, the deck is actually.
There's actually a structure even farther back. The driveway comes off the left-hand side, and there's a, there's a big garage building that's past that whole area, probably back by another thirty feet. But where we're actually trying to propose to build the deck area, um, do you have the same pictures I have? On the deck area is actually a garden there right now with a retaining wall, and there's a door on the left-hand side, and the deck area we're putting there is really just a concrete crumbling walkway right now. So, it's really just taking the area that's already there, the garden and, uh, concrete walkway, and resurfacing it with treated lumber and putting a railing on it. But there will be a staircase up to the upper level deck.
Well, that, that property drops off quite a bit, so you're gonna be, the deck's gonna be up at the first floor level, down, walking down to the grate in the back.
Right. About four treads. It's about four treads, so it's about a little bit less than four feet.
Yeah, there's no way even to add anything to this house without a variance.
No.
That's just, that's the reason we're sitting here is for this purpose. I, uh, this, this meeting is open to the public. If anyone has any comments for or against this application, um, the number here is eight-seven-two-seven-zero-one-one. What were you saying, Don?
Well, actually, what we're doing is, uh, approving an extension of pre-existing nonconformits rather than grant the variance, because if we grant the variance, the only thing that'd be legal on this property would be the deck. So.
We've seen quite a few of these.
Yes, yes.
There's always things that are a hundred years old or, or older.
Yeah, I saw the cobblestone foundation.
Yeah, yeah.
See, started, uh, digging your post holes too.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, originally, I wanted to find out, you know, it was, 'cause a lot of times when they used to, when they built those cobblestone houses, they took tons of cobblestone and pulled it on the outside perimeter. So, if, we don't want to find out, we don't want to find out a month from now or a week from now, we go to dig that thing, it's a solid cobblestone. Luckily, they only did it to like the first two feet of the foundation, so we're gonna be able to get forty-two-inch holes in.
I don't think anyone's gonna call in on this. It's, it's a pretty benign addition to this house, and the, the deck has to go on the back of the house, has to attach to the house, that's all there is to it.
Just from my understanding, this is not gonna be a two-sturdy deck. It's gonna be a single-sturdy.
So, excuse me?
It's not gonna be a two-sturdy deck.
No.
Okay. I misunderstood your.
It's a second level.
It's, the deck is all.
I just wanted, for the record.
Yeah, the deck is all level, but there's, the main door that you come out, the back of the house, is down. It's a steps, it steps down to that, and that's really just covering the concrete walkway so he doesn't have to step down.
I, I understand.
Okay.
I just wanted, just to clarify for, for the record.
Thank you.
Pursuant to, uh, six-seventeen-point-five of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type-two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Bob or Don, you wanna handle this one?
Yeah. Um, as, as discussed, the house is what, a hundred years old?
Yeah.
And, um, as, uh, Don said, it falls under a pre-existing condition. I mean, you can't build anything on that house without, uh, um, without it being in the front setback. And it's even, it's, it's currently on the back of the house. Essentially, there's no other way, um, to do what you're, what you're proposing to do. It's not out of character, uh, for the neighborhood. I don't see any other way to do it. As far as remedies goes, uh, the deck is, is, is gonna, is gonna, it's gonna be on the backside of the house, so.
Yeah, it's not, it would be completely invisible from the front of the house.
No, or the sides. Is this significant? I don't believe so. I mean, once again, the house, the house was built a hundred years ago, and the whole, the whole house was built in the front setback. I don't believe there's any, uh, physical and, uh, environmental conditions to consider. And, um, once again, because the house is a hundred years old, um, our variance requests are basically self-created, but, I mean, there's, there isn't anything that you can do to build a house in the back of the house that's already in the front setback. Anybody else want to add anything?
No. That sums it up.
So, with that, I will make a motion to allow an area variance, um, to allow a forty-two foots of, of front setback. Uh, where seventy-five foot is required to construct a fourteen-foot-by-sixteen-foot backyard deck associated with a pre-existing nonconforming single-family residence on a half-acre parcel having SBL number zero-six-six-point-zero-three-zero-dash-zero-one-dash-zero-six-nine, located in a, uh, LC-two low-intensity commercial district under section two-two-five-dash-sixteen-B five-A of the code of, of the Town of Webster to Dean Harrisus.
Second.
Mr. Denoto.
Aye.
Mr. Barone.
Aye.
Mrs. Vola.
Aye.
Mr. Houser.
Aye.
All right. You have your variance. Uh, two conditions. One, you're meeting full construction. You have to start within a year. And, uh, you need a building permit. So, you can go to the town hall tomorrow if you want to get your building permit.
Okay.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. And the last item on the scheduled matters is nine-fifty Limpet Drive Garage. Corinne, if you could read that into the record, please?
Nine-fifty Limpet Drive Garage, located at nine-fifty Limpet Drive. Applicant Anthony Masucci is requesting an area variance to allow a twenty-eight-foot front setback where thirty-five feet is required, associated with the construction of an additional ten-by-twelve-foot one-car attached garage to an existing single-family detached dwelling on a point-three-three acre parcel having SBL number zero-nine-four-point-zero-seven-dash-two-dash-three-three, located in an MHR medium-high residential district under section two-two-five-dish-thirteen-B sub-one-sub-E sub-one of the code of the Town of Webster.
Good evening. Could you, uh, just state your name for the record, please, and just tell us about your project?
Yep. Good evening. My name is Anthony Masucci, and, uh, basically, yes, just looking to build a third-car ten-by-twenty-two square-foot garage.
Okay. I looked at that location, and, uh, that was, that must've been done under a cluster plan, 'cause the front setbacks are less than, are, are typical. I, I, Don, you're probably familiar with that. So, even though it's not a corner lot, it almost acts like a corner lot, 'cause the road does a ninety-degree curve at that point. So, um, the front corner of the garage is where the encroachment is. I, I looked at maybe moving it back, but then you'd probably need a side setback, because it's angled to the lot line, um.
Well, if it's clustered, you have a separate building separation of fifteen feet and no closure, then is it five feet to the side, uh, property line? It's, they, obviously, their option was to request a front setback, so that's, that's what's been discussed.
So, is there a reason the builder didn't, or didn't propose to move it back a couple feet to make it even with the existing, back with the existing garage, so the backs lined up, or not? Did you consider that?
That third-car garage is positioned symmetrically two feet off the front and two feet off the back to keep the roof lines the same.
Yeah.
I, if I move that back, then I'm going for a side variance. So, one way or another, I'm going for a variance, and it was news to me that I needed a, a front variance because when that house was built, it was already built out of regulation, so to speak.
Yeah. Okay. Now, from a carpenter's perspective, it's nicer to build it with two feet front and two feet back, because there's no way you're gonna match the roofing, there's no way you're gonna match the siding, and so when you have corners, it's a, a nice place to break, break things, so. And, and if, if you did move it back, it would only, it would pick up a foot and a half or so in the front. It's not significant. So, is the minimum front setback in this neighborhood, Josh, is it thirty feet?
If it was approved under the cluster zoning, um, I would have to look that information up. I don't have that readily available.
Aye.
Okay, it says thirty-five here. So, the original house was actually a little too close to the road.
There may be existing variance for the original house.
Yeah, because I thought that subdivision was thirty-five in the front.
Yeah.
If we approve this variance, it kind of corrects the house issue as well, don't you think? Because.
It's closer than the houses.
Yeah. Because the existing house is only thirty-one-point-four-three where thirty-five is required. I, actually, as, again, it's on a curve, much like the one we looked at in Beechwood Crescent. When a house is on a curve, it's difficult to line it up with the other houses, and as you come around the road, it doesn't look out of place with the neighborhood. You're probably just gonna kick the driveway over so you can pull a car into that, to that garage, right? Or it's just gonna be open from the garage side?
It'll curve over. It won't be a full, a third-car driveway all the way down to the road. It'll, it'll just curve over up top.
The, the other thing I note, it's only ten feet wide. That's a minimal third-car garage. Most of the third-car garages we see are twelve, fourteen feet wide.
Not gonna be able to open your door. Was, since reading your application, you're proposing to put your toys in there, about, and other items?
I'll be honest with you. I wanted to get more. I wanted to go more than the ten-foot, but I wanted to stay within the variant, or within the, the, the regulation for the side setback. So, that was why I went with the ten-foot. After everything was said and done, I found out that even with the ten-foot, I still needed a variance because of the front setback. So, I was asking for the minimum, but I would've ultimately liked to get a couple of more feet, but I didn't want to push my luck, so, you know, I didn't know if I would have to revisit coming back to, you know, if I wanted to go twelve feet. Um, that, that was, that was, uh, part of the issue, so I kept it at the ten.
All right. Josh, do you know for sure on the side setback is fifteen feet here? Or, it's, 'cause sometimes in these cluster developments, they make them ten feet. I, I don't know what this particular development allowed.
Yeah, I, I would have to check the, the.
My logic here is that he may be able to line that rear wall up and go to twelve, which, once we give him that variance, once we give him the variance for the twenty-eight feet, he can work within that, as long as he doesn't require a side setback variance. You, you follow my logic?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
I, you know, it's whatever's, uh, posted on the Shoe Craft Farm's subdivision map. The setback should be, uh, indicated on there.
I think, I think what we ought to do is, is act on this particular application, just as it was advertised, and then the applicant could research the side setback allowable, that's allowed, and you may be able to push the garage back to the, line up the rear line and make it a little bit wider and still meet your twenty-eight-foots front setback if you get tonight's variance.
I already know that the side setback is fifteen feet. I, I've talked to, I've talked to Rod in detail multiple times. We've gone over the setbacks.
Okay.
So, I know for a fact that it is fifteen feet.
So, Rod must've pulled out the original subdivision map?
Must've.
Yes. Okay.
Because when the subdivision was approved, they had to meet certain criteria, certain amount of homes being, you know, uh, less than one thousand square feet, certain amount of homes being greater than one thousand square feet, and, um, it, it, it should be stated on that subdivision map.
Okay.
But, you know, if it's fifteen feet, it's fifteen feet.
Yeah. All right. This, uh, this meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the application, our number is eight-seven-two-seven-zero-one-one, if you can call in. I told my wife, could you call, just to make sure the phone rings here? Just call, tell my friend on the loaf of bread or something.
Watch what you wish for.
Okay.
By the way.
I mean, does it make sense to table this? To give them a chance to get the, uh, size garage that's really, uh?
Are you?
Well, she tells them what's next.
Okay. Mr. DeMarco is, uh, is saying that maybe you should table this, re-advertise it for twelve feet, if that's what you really want. Are you gonna build a garage you're never gonna be happy with?
I'm, I'm satisfied with the ten feet.
Okay.
I mean, if I go, if I go ten by twenty-two, I've got the third-car garage. I'm happy with that.
Okay. Very good. All right. Well, um, my, my opinion is I don't have a problem with the garage because of the way the house is situated, uh, on the lot. And, as I said, it's, it's too bad that the builder didn't push it to the east more, but it is what it is. We run this all the time. It seems like, where do people have garages? You know, people have the third-car garages, and the house is always in the wrong position on the lot. It's just, just the way it is.
Especially on a corner lot.
Yeah. Third-car garages are, are very popular right now. And, um, anyways, I don't think anyone's gonna call in, so I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Um, do I do seeker? No. Nope. All right. Um, pursuant to section six-seventeen-point-five of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type-two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. As I said, the position of the house is almost like, the curb, it's almost like a corner lot. corner lot. And typically, you know, in Webster, typically, corner lots get a little concession in setback, because corner lots are difficult to fit everything you want into. A lot of times, it'll be a 50-foot setback, the law will afford it on a corner lot. So it's not unusual to, to make a little bit of a concession on a corner lot. Even though the road's curved, it's a corner any way you look at it. Okay. As I said before, the applicant's looking for a minimal variance. The garage, the garage he's looking for is only 10 feet wide, which is a small, small third-car garage. And he, he kind of self-contained himself. He said his wish was for 12-foot, so out of respect for the town's code, he kept it to a, to a 10-foot, 10-foot width on the garage. There's no negative impacts on the, on the neighborhood, no environmental impacts. We didn't hear any negative comments from neighbors. I think it'll, it'll be a nice addition to the house and make the house look very nice to have that third-car garage on it. I don't, you know, I don't see any negatives to this whatsoever. Anybody have anything to add?
I would add that the variance is only really for a portion of that front of the garage. It's only the corner of it.
The very front corner of the garage is the only encroachment, because the house is an angle, an angle to the road.
The rest of it is further back from the garage.
A very small portion of the garage. Now, I'll also state that the house initially was actually closer to the road than the code allowed, and this variance for the garage will, will clear that up as well. Okay. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to, to grant an area variance to allow a 28-foot front setback where 35 feet is required, associated with the construction of an addition 10 by 22 feet, one-car attached garage to an existing single-family attached dwelling on .33 acre parcel having SBL number 094.07-2-33, located in an MHR medium-high-density residential district under Section 225-13 sub-B sub-1 sub-E sub-1 of the Code of the Town of Webster, by Anthony Masucci.
Second. Mr. Borom.
Aye.
Mrs. Vola.
Aye.
Mr. Denoto.
Aye.
Mr. Housa.
Aye.
Just, just, this is the kind of thing I like to do. So you have a 28-foot front setback, and you're allowed a 15-foot side setback. Get a surveyor to lay that out. You might be able to make that garage 11 feet and still stay at 15 and 28, because right now, you're 15-point-something off that sideline. Why not? Give it a try.
Okay.
So there's two conditions. You need a building permit and one year meaningful, meaningful construction. All right?
Great.
Okay. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes tonight's meeting. Thank you for watching.
Anthony, did your mother work for the store department years ago?